Please take roll.
Dr. Jason Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Willhauer?
Here.
Ms. Wendy Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Clint Russell? Mr. Drew Turner?
Here.
Not intentionally, no.
Flag salute, attention, salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow. Heavenly Father, thank you for being with us today. We love you so much. Lord, please be with us as we make decisions that impact our community and our teachers and our students. Lord, please bless our community, our state, and our country. In your name we pray, amen. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. To include, four A, approval of the regular board minutes from February the fourteenth, B, approval of purchase orders four oh three to four oh eight for the general fund, C, approval of purchase orders number seventy-six, two oh four, two oh six for the activity fund, approval of purchase orders for the building fund, E, approval of purchase orders for the bond fund, F, travel expenses, G, fundraisers, H, change orders, and I, activity fund report.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items four A through four I.
Second.
Voting is now open. Dr. Jason Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Willhauer?
Yes.
Ms. Wendy Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Drew Turner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five is the report on revenue collections and expenditures.
Okay, if you just compare this year to last year, we're in better shape. I, you guys know, we've lasted several months, even since before Christmas, we have been paying some things. Our utilities, the lease on our modular buildings at the elementary, that's about twenty-five hundred dollars a month. Utilities, electric, water, and even some of the insurance, we've been able to cover out of building fund just to protect our general fund. This is probably the, the last month that it's going to look this good, maybe one more month, but then we come into May, June where we pay out the several payrolls over a couple of months. So it's good to be sitting where we're at as far as the general. Once I'm more confident that we'll get to the summer part, I would like to transition back to paying those normal things out of building and protecting our general. But the building fund has got us through that part. But as far as comparing, that's where that is. Still making slow but sure progress on insurance, getting a little bit of claims money back every day. So I am mildly optimistic and encouraged with that. I wanted to go into, that's the revenue part. If you saw, to finish up the twenty-three bond, you've seen dirt work laid, the foundation has been laid for the baseball. This county has been wonderful to come out and do that. Brewer Construction, we meet once a month, and we are going to get a permit and start building the footings for that thing. And so the goal on that is to be ready for the inside of that in the middle of July to coincide with the T-Mobile plans for the football field. And T-Mobile, again, that money is separate, that's Friday Night Lights, it's kind of earmarked. The award on that, we're getting ready to start. I keep, the deadline was April fifteenth for T-Mobile to get back with me. So I think by next Wednesday, they will have selected the turf company and the scoreboard company to start work on that. The deadline to, for that part is August first. And so that coincides with the indoor of July fifteenth. So hoping to have both of those things completed by, at least by the start of school in August, if not a few weeks earlier. So that's exciting. There's a little bit of confusion on that part. That was from the twenty-three bond, the indoor, and the turf for the football field and video board will be from, from T-Mobile. Not really revenue, but, and I don't know if I need to have a separate line on this, but I wanted to bring everybody up to date on three bills that will affect our district probably the most. And that is Senate Bill twenty-six, the retire and rehire. They're looking at in Oklahoma City being able to waive that three years, that teachers have to be retired and can cap off at thirty thousand. They're looking at being able to get rid of that, where teachers can retire, get into their teacher retirement, but come back in full time at no cap. As a district, we want to make sure that it's a good thing for the faculty, but good for us as well. We've talked in several of our admin meetings at bringing people back at three years' experience or five years, even though they went off the top, they'd come back in the bottom, but get full salary that way. And then they would be increased each, each and every year from that point. So personally, district-wise, I'm very much in support of Senate Bill twenty-six. It is gaining some traction, and hopefully that comes to fruition. House Bill twelve seventy-six is what we talked about a couple of weeks, months ago. I expected it to be done by now, it hasn't, but I still would be shocked if it doesn't, that's the sell, the bell to bell, no sell. It is, I still think it's going to come to fruition, I'm very confident it will. The, the holdup is what the board's role in that will be. Because is it going to be that the board has to have a policy that they can't? Or are they going to say you can't, and the board has to have a policy to say you can if you can? And, but I think it'll all play out, and we'll just be able to fall in line and go with that. And I look for that to be passed through both floors quickly. Last thing is Senate Bill seven fifty-eight, which is the virtual day bill, which would limit virtual days to two days next, or not next year, twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven. It would limit virtual days to two days or a total of twelve hours. But to do that would be nearly an act of Congress, literally. The governor would have to declare it a state of emergency for the, so if it's snowy here, you're not, unless it's a state of emergency. So in that case, we would not, I don't think, qualify for any virtual days. The one thing I want to say about that, though, is they talk about the thousand eighty hours. I just want people to know, and this year's different with several days out with weather. But the calendar that we approved the other day, all the hours that are to meet the state minimum, we are in excess of that number, traditional face-to-face, teacher in front of students, hours. So we don't count on the hours, traditional school hours, face-to-face, to meet the minimum. Virtual days, if we do those, are above and beyond. And so depending on how that bill is written, may or may not affect us, but would allow us, if it's, if it passed as written, it would allow us just to go all traditional face-to-face days, but continue to stay on the four-day week. That's my perfect case scenario, no virtual days, all traditional, and stay on four-day weeks. But, but that just, we're not getting any opinions, we can talk about that another time. Next year, calendar has been approved, and all these things, if approved, and it's passed out of House Committee, House Floor, Senate Committee, and now it's on the Senate Floor. Take that back, Senate Committee, Senate Floor, House Committee, it'll go to the House Floor. And if that's the case, it will be in effect for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. But we should be in good shape either way. So transitioning a little bit, I'm going to be the first principals report. Ms. Ellis and Mr. Helling are at, jinx, or wherever the speech and debate state is. There's twenty-seven, or seventeen kids competing at state, they're over there watching them. They asked me to give you a little bit of update. They sent me the text of what their principal, her principal report entailed, and she wanted to call out Bella Riggs, Caleb Sims, Bella in the hurdles, Caleb in the shot, Ann Disk, Joseph Estes in the hundred. They all won their events and did really well, so they wanted a shout-out to them in the board meeting. And Monday, this coming Monday, the fourteenth, is the Ag Speech Contest. Several of us will be judging that Monday afternoon, Monday evening, I think it starts at four, four-thirty. Still looking for judges, they would love to have you, if you're interested. Ms. Brown would love to have you be a judge for her contest Monday evening. And it's, if you've ever done it, if you haven't done it, it's really cool. And everybody's qualified for it, and those kids, you will be amazed at the work that these kids do and, and the outcomes. And so if you've got time, I would encourage you to get ahold of Ms. Brown and tell her you'd love to come up there because you'll be, you'll be very well, it's a great opportunity and experience for the kids and for the judges. So that is Monday afternoon at the Ag Building. So they wanted me to tell you those two things, and I went over to the principal's report, but that's my report, so.
Okay, thank you. So that leaves us, elementary?
I think Mr. Holland's going to go first.
Okay, oh, yep.
To get you back to Mr. Turner, I said another some of the school employees here are on board, but that's for anybody who want to be a judge.
It pays really well.
Yes, it will pay sometimes money to get after that. Two things I was going to speak about in the Ms. Holland talk. Next Wednesday, we will have Zoom meetings with the fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, all separate times. Zoom meeting with Cherokee Nation doing the state test prep, state test strategy type deal, an hour each grade. So looking forward to that, it's going to be the, it's going to be, hopefully the kids do something, have it, pay attention, and go from there. Track meet had seventh grade boys and eighth grade boys, both their four-by-two-hundred relay set school records. Had Edwin Contreras set a new school record for the eighth grade boys' long jump, eighteen feet, three inches. He broke the other record, which was seventeen-eleven, set in nineteen ninety-nine. So track and baseball are going on, soccer's going on, everything's going smoothly, knock on wood. Just looking forward to next Wednesday, get that away, and we start testing on the twenty-fifth. I did bring this on, you guys want to head up, she'll tell you a quick little.
Do you hear that, Carol? Quick?
Quick, quick statement on each, each one. And then I'll take them back, and then I'll come out.
He gave me until.
You've got time in a few minutes.
Okay, I've got several here. These kids were both on the buzzer team, academic, sorry, academic kids on buzzer as well as written competition. And I'm going to have you two wait back here for just a second. These are my high schools, the rest of you can come on up. Written competition, they had to qualify to get there, and we went to state last week. And several of them qualified for scholar, I gave you a, a little review there. Out of, there are a lot of kids, we went on Friday, it goes on Friday and Saturday, they could take as many, if they were scholar, then they could take like five or six tests. Most of them opted to take like three. The scholar test alone is over two hundred, or right at two hundred questions, they've got ninety minutes to take it. Aubrey, Aubrey Ball, sixth grader, qualified in two things. She, she ended up fourteenth in math and seventh, so she actually qualified, she'll get a medal, top ten get a medal. So she, out of seventy-five, she got seventh in science. Just hit my crazy boom, so that's Aubrey. Several others that are listed there, but as far as another sixth grader, Eden ended up with, she qualified for scholar, took three tests, did really well, but only got a top ten in language arts, out of seventy, though, out of seventy. So I guess you're supposed to go that way. And then again, several more. Jordan and Peyton both qualified for scholar. Jordan ended up with ninth out of sixty-seven in language arts and eighteenth out of fifty-eight in scholar. So she did real well in that. And then Peyton doesn't know how, I wouldn't tell her what she did. She also was a scholar, twenty-five out of fifty-eight in scholar, tenth in language arts, so she gets a medal there. And she was one question away from a trophy in science. She got a fourth out of sixty-four kids in seventh grade science, and I think her daddy might be real proud. Seventh grade science teacher. So, and then we had this guy, has never done it before, he's on the academic team for the first time ever. He's only an eighth grader, taking geometry. And so he took geometry down, he qualified for geometry down there, kind of scary. And believe it or not, there were twelve kids from across the state that qualified for geometry, and he got eight. So we're proud of him for that, and that was cool. Okay, this guy, he's an eighth grader, this is Easton Chastain. Not sure where to start with him, he's the captain of our boat for the seventh eighth grade team. He qualified for scholar and didn't say anything to me about his medical condition until Tuesday. Thursday, wasn't feeling very good, Friday, he felt worse, but off we went, and he never said a word. Saturday, felt a little bit better, Sunday, felt really bad, face was all swollen. And Monday, called the dentist, and he ended up going to the dentist, and he goes, well, I've done ballgame this afternoon, in his uniform, because they did a root canal. He was not feeling well on Friday when he was going for scholar. So, I hate to say this, but he missed a medal by one, but I'm sure, I really thought he would do very, very well, and now I understand why. He only got eleven out of ninety-two in social study and twenty-three out of fifty-one in scholar, but I was so proud. I mean, and then he went on to the ballgame. So, but let me also say, we needed some, okay, now you guys come on over, these are the guys that are, this is nine, this is Payne Bell, ninth grade, Jace Hobbs, tenth grade, and they qualified to go to Nationals in New Orleans. Well, part of the reason the tenth grade is going because of this guy, we're going to be shorthanded on tenth grade. The tenth grade really has done very, very well, and this will be their third time back, back-to-back to back, go to Nationals. But two of them weren't going to be able to go for the, the state, our state competition, buzzer competition. So I called the lady at state and said, can I bring an eighth grader? And she said, um, sure. So I almost kind of brought a ringer, because he's really good. And there were two different, two different rounds at state, he got the last question, or the second to the last question, two different rounds that won the round. So the tenth graders, why are we taking this eighth grader? Well, then they finally thought, thank you. So anyway, but the, so you can go, and he obviously has baseball right now, but he's going with us to Nationals because he qualified. And then these guys, actually, this will be based on board approval, whether we get to go or not. Anyway, this will be their fourth national competition, because they were on the, the team as eighth grade and seventh grade when we won the state science bowl, which I have to tell you, we beat Edmund Sequoia, their school is bigger than our whole district. These guys got to go to Washington DC, everything paid for. So anyway, this will be basically, well, then that also qualified them to go to New Orleans two years ago. And last year, they went to Chicago, and you guys were state runner-up last year, I think, yeah. The eighth graders were state runner-up. Anyway, they went to Chicago, and then they qualified now to go to New Orleans again. And they, they competed at state this year, they got third and fourth. The two that beat us were two private schools, so, you know, they can dance to different drummer. But anyway, I'm very proud, this is Peyton and Jace, and good kids, really good kids, and very involved in everything else that is done. Thank you for your support and continue to encourage me.
Thanks, Ms. Holland, good job.
Let us know if we, if we get to go, and we will. Thank you.
Okay, elementary, super busy at the elementary this time of year. Start state testing next week, we've got field trips, everybody's going on a field trip, awards assemblies. So it's just super crazy, but great things happening. I just want to recognize the PTO, we did laps for Longhorns last week, it was very successful, raised lots of money for the elementary, so we're super, super excited about that. I did not bring students to recognize this week, but I do want to recognize some people. So we had, the Cherokee Nation chose us for a federal audit this year. It's a very big deal, the Cherokee Nation helps fund our Great Eight program. And so it was a really big deal, and they kept telling us all along, we're going to help you, we're going to help you. Well, it was on a Tuesday, and on Friday, they decided they were going to get us all the supplies we needed. On Friday morning, she called, and she said, oh, I've got all your mulch, but you're going to have to come and get it. So I'm standing there going, uh, what do I do? And Nick was there, and he said, no big deal, no big deal. He goes, we'll get a trailer, and Stephen said, yeah, we'll get a trailer, we'll go get it. So then I'm going, uh, how are we going to get it, how are we going to get it spread? And Coach Thomas was standing there, and he said, that's all right, I'll call Coach Amos, and we'll consider weightlifting, they'll just come and they'll spread mulch. So they, they came, and they took time out, and they spread mulch. And then I called Clint, and Clint and Randy came over, and we had to remove some playground equipment that was broken. So I mean, in one, one afternoon, they had everything taken care of. So that, I just want to praise these people that are on staff for us, because I'm sitting there panicking about something that gives us a lot of money, and in half a day, they had it taken care of. So kudos for these people that, that work for us and take care of us, because they just, they do it every day, and we don't ever recognize them. So I just want to make sure they get the credit that they deserve, because that wasn't in their job description for the day, and they just stepped up and did it. So thank you guys for doing what you do every day, we appreciate you for that. I also just wanted to introduce, I've got some people that I've recommended to replace. We've got a lot of people retiring at the elementary this year. So we've been interviewing, and we've got six people that I've recommended to hire, so I just wanted to get you some faces with some names and introduce, introduce, so if you guys will sit up as I introduce you. Brittany Jones comes with, to us with several years of experience. She's been a Teacher of the Year for her building and a District Teacher of the Year. She's been teaching since two thousand and eleven. She has experience with all of the new curriculum that we're bringing in. An outstanding teacher, communicates well with parents, so she will be a real asset to our district. So I want to introduce Brittany to you. Ms. Anita Jones has been teaching since when, Ms. Jones? Long time, yes, long time, yeah. Anita's been teaching for many years, she is great with small groups, communicates very well with parents, builds strong relationships with kids, also has experience with all of the programs that we're implementing this year, so she'd be a great asset to the district as well. Leah Ramsey, so Leah Ramsey lives here in Iowa, and has been teaching since two thousand and fourteen? Early childhood educator, strong classroom management, has lots of experience with, also, also experience with the programs that we've been, that we're implementing here, so she's going to be a great asset to our district as well. Ms. Schmidt has, is going to be, next year will be her third year of teaching. Strong with, strong experience with students with disabilities, kind of her area of specialty. Has been trained in the new programs that we're using as well, so she'll be also an asset to our district. Brittany Borat has been teaching since, what year, Ms. Borat?
I'm January of two thousand and eleven.
Okay, January of two thousand and eleven, she's been a team lead, been a team lady, everything is in the book. Has been trained in everything imaginable. Again, she's also has experience in all of these programs that we're, that we've, that we're implementing. So we're welcome, would hope to welcome Brittany to the team. And Chelsea, Allison is right here, Chelsea is, will be a first-year teacher. She's currently interning with two of our really strong teachers at our elementary. She's been trained, interning with a first-grade teacher and a third-grade teacher, so we hope to add Chelsea to our team next year. So thank you.
Thank you. So that brings us to.
Oh, wait, Tracy's got something.
Oh, sorry, Tracy.
I just wanted to invite everyone to come out for our local Special Olympics event on April twenty-sixth on Saturday. Mrs. Yoder has been planning that, and along with our other two coaches, Mrs. Reedy and Mrs. Blighner. So that's April twenty-sixth on Saturday, and it's a big deal for. And it's a big deal for our kids, they're gonna have a great time, and it'll lift your spirits like you've never had before, so they're pretty special. Awesome kids, and it'll be a fun day from, um, nine to noon at the high school gym.
Thank you, anything else? All right, moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Citizens' Comments. Hearing none, uh, next is Discussion and Vote to Approve or Disapprove the Senior Class Trip to Branson, Missouri on May the twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. I'd make a motion to approve the senior class trip to Branson, Missouri.
Second.
Do you have the same meeting?
No.
I guess it's not online, I don't know.
There's just, we had it as Agenda Item Twelve.
Which we can do.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's fine, we have it down as twelve.
That's what I have it on.
Voting is now open, Dr. Jason Cook.
Yes.
You had it as twelve.
Mr. Richard Willhauer.
Yes.
Ms. Wendy Keener.
Yes.
Cause I got it at eight.
Mr. Drew Turner.
Yes.
I don't have, that was danced, you said senior, right?
I said senior class trip to Branson, Missouri, but you know what?
Yeah.
I don't have the same.
So, this is where we were right there.
All right, thank you, it's my first time, so, thank you for the grace.
Pay raise.
Yep, I knew I was gonna lose it today anyway, okay, so, um, back on track here, thanks Wendy. Uh, Agenda Item Eight is actually the realignment of the Iola School Board and Motion for Approval. Nominate Richard Willhauer as President of the Iola School Board. Uh, B, nominate Wendy Keener as Vice President of the Iola School Board, and C, nominate, uh, nominate Clint Russell as Clerk of the Iola School Board.
I make a motion, we realign the board as red.
Second.
Voting is now open, Dr. Jason Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Richard Willhauer.
Yes.
Ms. Wendy Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Drew Turner.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, nine, Discussion on the Bond Survey.
Okay, so, Dr. Harris, have you sent that to?
I apologize, it was my understanding that you were going to send it to them, so I can send it.
Well, so, you will have, it is very lengthy read, uh, I will say this, I was. I was expecting a greater number of results, whenever we sent out the community survey. Last time for the four-day week, uh, we got about six hundred responses, this one we got two hundred and thirteen responses. So I honestly thought it would be quite a bit more than we, we, but I appreciate those that, that did it. Last time we just did it all online, this year we had paper pencil, uh, copies for those that didn't wanna get online. And so appreciate the people that made that happen, but anyway, I, I don't wanna take, and anybody is welcome to the results. Uh, but again, I, every one of them had questions that you answered, and then there was a point for some short-answer responses, so instead of reading two hundred and thirteen short. I want you guys to, to do that, but the things that I gleaned from that the most was, uh. The, the people, the public would like some more, uh, felt like they didn't have all the information from the first go-round. So duly noted, uh, the, the public forums that we had. Uh, I took it that they weren't, they didn't find them to be very helpful, and so, uh, duly noted. Uh, wanna take some things, I've talked to other districts as far as a thing, and, but anyway, we're gonna use this survey as a map. Uh, some guidelines, some things to do moving forward, but, uh. Dr. Harris, I don't know how she did it as far as, you wanna tell them what, I mean, how she came up with all the responses unless she typed in two hundred and thirteen, but anyway, go ahead.
So what I did is I went through all of the responses, and the first thing I did was look at who had responded, whether they were community members. Or, um, parents of current students, parents of former students, um, or people, or staff members. And then I asked who lived inside the district, and those that did not live inside the district, I took those out because those do not affect the actual vote. And then the next thing that I looked at was whether they were in favor of the bond, whether they said. Yes, I voted for the bond and I supported it, um, I supported it, but I didn't vote for it. Uh, or they said, no, I didn't support the bond, I don't, I didn't vote for it, or no, I didn't vote, but I didn't support it. And then I also had an option for those who didn't feel comfortable, um, providing that answer, saying, I decline to answer this question. And so whenever you get the results, I have taken the remaining questions and divided the, the results based on. Whether they were leaning toward being a supporter, leaning toward being a non-supporter, or we'll run at the fifteen who didn't tell us which way they were leaning. And so that's how that is set up, uh, I think one of the main things that I took out of it was. We specifically had a question that said, would you rather know the maximum dollar amount? Or would you rather know project specifics, and it was almost dead even, so it was like, either way we go. There's gonna be half of the group that's not happy, so, um, which wasn't surprising, but it was frustrating. Because I was really hoping that we would at least get which way to steer this vote.
And just the, the one, the reason that was on there is with the things that have happened over the last six weeks with the economy and the tariffs. Everybody that is starting a, a, a project that's very specific. It's gonna come in over budget if it's very specific, because that is very, very fluid market right now, I mean, and, and changes every night on the news. And so we were hoping to find out, do you want this project no matter what it costs? Or do you want this cost no matter what the project is, and again, I, I don't know, and we're, so it's gonna be a work in progress trying to, to make those mesh, and. I just, I do feel like we're a little bit more, the, the market is more volatile than it maybe ever has been, and, uh. There are districts that have zoned in on the, uh, project. And came out ten to fifteen million dollars short on the end and had to go do that, there are people that zoned in on the, on the number and had to, and so. I truly, we put that on there truly to find out, and so with not a resounding answer one way or the other. That's, I mean, and that's, that's the challenge accepted for us, is I'm gonna try to zoom that in on both parts as much as we can. And probably a little bit of flexibility on both ends, but the, uh, it is obviously, uh, would like some more specifics on both ways, and so. That is where we're tasked, or what I feel like I'm tasked with in the meantime, is to do that, and I, I don't think it's an easy answer. Uh, and I think most people understand that, uh, but anyway, it's just like every bid that we're getting for any project. Normally those bids are one-twenty, that bid is good for one-twenty, bid is good for one-eighty, I had a salesman talking about copy machines. Their liter- their bids are literally what, seven days good, and so that is how volatile the market is in all areas, but copy machines. Are now offering seven-day, once they give you that proposal, you have seven days to sign, so the days of. Two, three, four, six months are gone, then they may come back at a point, so anyway, uh, don't want, if anybody hasn't. Again, uh, Dr. Harris, sir, it's available, right?
I, it will be on our district website, and you can stop by the admin building and pick up a paper copy of the report if you would prefer to have a paper copy. And I will get that email to you as soon as possible.
So, we'll send the email out, but yeah, anybody will be able to access that on the, on our school website, questions on it?
How much detail can we get on a building plan without having to do, I don't know, I don't even know what an architect would cost on a thirty-six million dollar project, but I mean, you know. A rough drawing, I mean, have they told you what they'd be willing to do, then not charge us for, or, you know, without, or would we have to pay something, and then just if we don't go through, do we eat it, or? Or can you even pay them to do it without passing the bond, I mean, I don't know what the legality is there.
So, it's, each place is different, a- and the architect is not the. The one that I'm really concerned on, I'm gonna pick on, on a construction company just cause they're here, but I, I'm gonna let him speak to a little bit. If I told him, if the architect told him what we're looking at, and we got it like that. So, I mean, I don't know if you're ready, if you can answer this, but what does that look like if I gave you a project today? That is gonna get voted on in ninety days, and then the money is available after the, the design and all that. Can you help us out for a couple minutes on that, what that looks like, and the vol- and why I, and if I'm wrong about the volatility, please say, but anyway.
You're right on, that's, we're seeing that exact same item in the construction industry. So, there's two ways to go about kind of project procurement, or there are multiple ways, but two main ways, one. You can hire for all your architectural services ahead of time and get a complete set of drawings, which will cost a decent amount of money. And then we as a contractor can bid that set of drawings and provide that price at that point, and then move forward with construction, or. We can get a preliminary set of drawings, just schematics, which is what we did the last time, and budget a price. But we won't know until the future what that actual price will be because of the market, I don't know, does that, does that make sense? We can go with a full set of drawings now that will cost a substantial amount of money. And then get a price locked in, or get a preliminary set of drawings with a budget, and then after the drawings are done, typ- and typically it's the latter. Typically, a, a district won't want to front the several hundred thousand dollars for drawings.
Okay, that, that was my question, because that was a big point of contention with people in the meetings was, well, you know, you guys don't even have a plan yet, you know, so.
The latter is more typical, it's basically based on a budget, and then go to the bond, and then go to construction.
Okay.
So, is it more volatile in April twenty-five than it has, I mean, is this true? I mean, it's always volatile, right, or it's always?
Except for, except for COVID months, this is, yeah, this is the most volatile we've seen right now, so.
Okay, well, again, that was, I'm very appreciative of everybody that filled out the survey, uh, regardless of the way they voted or intend to vote. That will help us to be more informed and, uh, you know, go from there, so we. I've spent a lot of hours looking at those survey results, gonna continue to do that.